Tuesday, October seventeenth, please stand for four hour invocation led by Public Safety Chaplain Ed Conick, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's place ourselves in presence of the Lord. To heaven and father, we thank you for this occasion as we come together for the city council meeting. We ask you to bless each and every one of the city councilmen and our mayor. Give them the wisdom and knowledge with the compassion and love to best serve all the people in the city of Mobile with wisdom and justice for all. And we're thankful for this occasion and we ask God's blessings upon each and every one here. And we ask protection against all our first responders on every shift and every day. And bless them all. And we ask all this through Christ our Lord. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation in the power and is able to live, be, and test as well.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our October seventeenth meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, at this time, please put it on the off or the vibrated position. The off or the vibrated position. Any person that is desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office by two o'clock PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council on a non-agenda item must be identified and obtained to the City of Mobile business. Any person that has not given a proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam City Clerk?
Approval of minutes of October tenth.
So move.
Second.
Improper moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's approved.
Communications for Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. It's good to see you running this morning. Appreciate you being here. I have several announcements this morning. The first one is, I'll say a little bit bittersweet because I think you may have read in the media yesterday that Chief Jeremy Lamy had an opportunity to go into the private sector and take another job. And it's just the right thing for him to do at this time in his career and for his family. I can remember hearing his name, being a new mayor. I don't know if it was year one or year two, but as we were searching for a fire chief at the time, somebody said Jeremy Lamy, one day will be a chief. He was extremely young at that point in time, still young, still a child. And I thought, golly. And then when I came into my office for an interview, I'm thinking, you know, he's got it. He's got command presence. He's just young. So, but he was coming to fire departments when he was four years old because his daddy was a firefighter. And so, this is his life. He has dedicated his entire career up until this point in time to serving the citizens of Mobile. And I'm not going out on a limb when I tell you this. There hasn't been nobody that has done more for the fire department from a leadership position than Jeremy Lamy. And I would say there's several reasons for that, but one is just the foundation of his character, of who he is. And then when you add on top of that his leadership skills and his ability to interact with people, he just is the total package. And so, you can understand why I'm saddened today to tell you this because it's a huge loss for our city. But I know this, that if called upon, he'll stay plugged in and he'll continue to help, you know, where we need the help. ISO one accreditation actually happened under Chief Sealy. But the guy that was doing all the work behind the scenes, staying up late at night, along with some others, which he will not take credit for all of it, would be Jeremy Lamy. The CAFA accreditation for the ambulance service was under the leadership of Jeremy Lamy. And also the CFAI accreditation for the entire fire department under his leadership. Only the ninth fire department in the United States to have all of those accreditations. Again, I'd say that he is and has been the best chief in the history, best fire chief in the history of the city of Mobile. And so, I'd like to give him just a moment to make a couple of remarks. Chief Lamy?
Well, I certainly don't know if I deserved all that. It's a very difficult moment for me, but but I leave knowing that we have some tremendous people and that are eager to serve these citizens each and every day. And that's the biggest message I want to the people in the audience and the people in the community is that I'm just one person. Everything that we accomplished was because of our team and the work they put in and the seriousness that they take it each and every day. But I didn't make this decision in haste. Me and my family prayed extensively, but it's time for a new chapter. Thank you, Mayor.
So, you can imagine being in my chair and Chief Lamy, one of your stars, comes in and says he's getting ready to start a new chapter in his life. He said, "But Mayor, I know who needs to be the next chief, at least my recommendation, and that's Johnny Mars." And so, yesterday it came out in an announcement that we are appointing Chief Johnny Mars as the interim fire chief until we can bring before the council a later date. The thirty-two-year record. And Jeremy, you are only twenty... So, and he's got you smoked, okay? See, he knows everything. But he's really served in every, at every level, in every department. His leadership roles included his captain, a district chief, administrative chief, and a deputy chief. He will become the seventeenth fire chief, excuse me. Yeah, he will become the seventeenth fire chief and the first black fire chief in the history of the city of Mobile. So, Chief Mars has my utmost confidence. I know that you've had good training and I think at a later point in time, he'll have an opportunity to speak to everyone. So, Johnny, I know that you're... See, nope, gone. Okay. He was... Okay, he's not here. I just leave it at that. Okay, and so, also during these appointments, you know, where we stand now is that we've not had the position of Public Safety Director filled for the last several months. And so, now we think that is time to do that. And so, we are making that announcement today. And it's Rob Lasky, and I think Rob is not here either. But he's done an excellent job ahead of the Officer of Professional Responsibility, brought tremendous, I think, responsibility, discipline, and all within all the departments across the city. But having been a career FBI agent, he has a special place in his heart for first responders. As the Public Safety Director, that knowledge that he has had in law enforcement will transcend and to making sure that our officers and our firefighters, you know, are treated properly. So, we really look forward to Rob filling that position.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to congratulate Chief. I would like to, you know, say that also that, you know, it was a pleasure to work with you and everything, especially voting for you to be fire chief. One thing I'm gonna miss about him is his humblest. He's a very humble individual. For someone to have a title like him, never let it go to his head. And I would like to say, you know, congratulations and good luck, you know, to the future. And we will be missing around here.
This time, the Airbus team can, Darrell Taylor, bring his team. Airbus Week, and then we'll take the photographs. So, Darrell, good to see y'all this morning. So, and the proclamation reads, whereas Airbus, a global leader in the aerospace industry, has made significant investments in our community, contributing to the economic growth and development of the city of Mobile, and whereas Airbus has committed to growing our local workforce, advancing youth in aviation, making our community stronger, and expanding commercial aircraft manufacturing, and whereas Airbus is part of Team Mobile, our strength as one team, including local industry, community, and government, and has been key to the continued growth of Airbus and Alabama, and whereas Airbus will add a thousand jobs in the next few years, continuing to offer employment opportunities, promote skills, training programs, and thereby enhancing the local workforce, and whereas Airbus has consistently demonstrated its commitment to innovation, technological advancement, and sustained practices aligning with the values of our city, and whereas the third week of October provides an ideal opportunity to celebrate and recognize the partnership between Airbus and the city of Mobile and its residents. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the hundred and eighth mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim October fifteenth through twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three as Airbus Week in the city of Mobile. And this week-long celebration serves as a testament to the positive impact that Airbus has had on our community, fostering prosperity, building partnerships, and advancing workforce development, and promoting a sustainable future. Congratulations and thank you, Darrell, for all that y'all did. You and your team.
Councilman Small, Ms. Stimson, the rest of the council, thank you. We are humbled and honored to accept this today. I'm surrounded by amazing team members. Not all of them here today. We had to leave nearly twenty-two-hundred of them at home. But our presence in Mobile has certainly grown over the last twenty years and obviously with our final assembly line, that's accelerated. We're excited that this week and your recognition of us this week aligns with our expansion activities. We have an exciting event tomorrow, which will mark about fifteen months since we announced the opening of our second final assembly line for the three-twenty, our third overall assembly line. We're at eighteen-hundred-plus employees at that facility now, twenty-two-hundred overall. And it's just a real honor to be here in Mobile. We've felt supported from day one and your support continues to make us successful. And hopefully, we're repaying that commitment to ourselves as we create these new jobs with our workforce development, our apprentices, and our flatback night. So, thank you. And also, it's a real humble day for us to also be here with Chief Lamy. So, thank you for your service and everything you've done. Thank you. We should see the first aircraft in, actually being delivered in twenty-twenty-six out of that final assembly line. We'll put the first one in in the middle of twenty-five.
You got that. We're ready. Okay.
Congratulations.
And if Kelly Warren could join me, please. This is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Okay? And the proclamation reads, whereas breast cancer is the second most diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and remains a leading cause of cancer deaths among American women, and whereas early detection and improved treatments are believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer, and whereas researchers, scientists, and numerous nonprofit organizations are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer, and during the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause. And whereas the Mobile County Health Department and its primary care division, Family Health, has been a longtime participant in the Alabama Breast and Cervical Cancer Detection Program, which provides free breast cancer and cervical cancer screenings for women who meet eligibility guidelines. And whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the city of Mobile stands in solidarity with our healthcare partners and breast cancer survivors as we continue fighting this battle together. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the hundred and eighth mayor of the city of Mobile, extend our deepest respect for survivors and those advocating for prevention and a cure, and in so doing, hereby proclaim October twenty-twenty-three as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Mobile. So, Kelly, I'd like you to make a few remarks. And Gina, if you will join us for a picture in just a moment, okay?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council, for letting us be here today. I know everyone in this room has been touched in some way by breast cancer, whether it was a personal experience or family or friends. And so, the most effective thing that we can do is prevention. And so, Mobile County Health Department and Family Health is happy to be able to continue to provide these prevention services to the people of our great county. And we have several sites that will be highlighting special events on the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh at our various locations throughout Mobile County. But I would like to call attention to an event on the twenty-seventh where our mobile medical unit will be at the Thomas Sullivan Community Center from nine-thirty AM to two-thirty PM, offering breast screenings. And so, we just encourage everyone to take control of their health, come out and see us, get some education, get some breast screening, and also get signed up for other services as necessary. So, thank you for this time today. Thank you for the recognition. And just tell the people you love to go get checked.
So, Chief, if you'll introduce our Officer of the Month.
Mayor, thank you for having us here, council staff. I would say I'm introducing him, but there's probably only one council member that hasn't seen Officer William Elliott. This is his third time winning this award in two years, which I've just found out he's chasing Chief Martin's record. But in the month of August, the captain of the third precinct realized she had an issue with violent crimes. So, she took her best officer and told him she needed something done with it. And that's exactly what William did. Although he had twenty-eight felonies and a hundred and eight misdemeanors, really doesn't tell the whole story. The whole story is, in that month, he reduced, he and others, but he mainly, reduced the violent crime in the Saint Stevens Road area corridor, Trinity Gardens, and Toleman Field by seventy-two and a half percent. They went from having forty violent crimes in the month of August to only eleven in the month of September, which is what we're really driving for. It's not, Chief Walters always told us, you can't arrest your way out of the problem. But what he did is he reduced the crime in that area. And for that reason, he stands here today, winning his third officer of the month. So, thank you for having us. This is Officer William Elliott.
Okay. The mayor had recognized Breast Cancer Month on today. And next week, council, we're gonna be wearing pink to recognize Breast Counselor. Last week, we gave a proclamation to the Penelope House. So, today, we are wearing purple in support of domestic violence. And want to have a moment of silence too for the victims that had lost their life for domestic violence and also for the war over Israel. Because, you know, them, to me, is us. And I'm just asking, let's have a moment of silence just for a few moments with those two subject matters. Also, at this time, Councilman Penn had mentioned this morning and questioned about the incident that has been playing a lot on social media with the officer arresting a citizen. I would like our Chief of Staff, James Barber, to come up and address some of those concerns that was brought to him this morning.
Yes, sir. The... So, the question's concerning the video that kind of went viral yesterday. Showed a mobile police officer punching a handcuffed man from behind in the face with a closed fist, as well as in the head. The preliminary investigation, the status of the officer right now, he's on administrative duties or administrative leave. The preliminary investigation, after reviewing body camera, video, as well as witness testimony, is that while during the arrest procedure, while he was being arrested for having marijuana, that the subject, while he was handcuffed, grabbed the officer by his testicles. They ended up from the vehicle to go onto the ground. He continued to latch on to the officer's testicles and that's when you see the officer striking the individual until he let go. There is physical evidence of this particular assault. He has been charged with felony assault on the officer. The officer is also followed up with a urologist, I believe, today to continue his medical care. And the suspect has been arrested for possession of marijuana and assault, second felony assault on the police officer. Department of Justice and the FBI has been notified because of the video. And there's a review of that taking place, I believe, at eleven o'clock today with the FBI Mobile Office.
Question has the citizen that was arrested, that he, I guess, you know, have he filed any type of charges or anything, you know, towards the city? Or anything have we heard from that individual?
I have not heard from the individual to my, best of my knowledge, he's still incarcerated. The, he's not filed a complaint. But I will say that the officer reported the use of force last Thursday, October twelfth, is when this happened. The officer did report the use of force. He did report that he used multiple fifth closed fist blows in order to get the subject to let go of his testicles.
Any questions or comments from the council? Thank you so much, Mr. Penn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Like I stated in pre-council, after watching, the video was very challenging. You know, the incident that occurred is under investigation, like you said. So, hopefully, all the facts and truth and the information will be, will come out. It's understandable that recent issues involving police officers throughout this country eroded some trust issues with the community. We're grateful for the Mobile Police Department and we have some great police officers. And we know that, and I said it before and I always make the statement, you're gonna have some good politicians, you're gonna have some bad politicians. You're gonna have some good pastors, you're gonna have some bad pastors. You're gonna have good and bad in every situation. But I'm glad that this is under investigation because it was very challenging watching the video. While watching the video, I had to ask myself a couple of questions. Were proper procedures were followed during the incident? That's what I asked during the pre-council. I believe following proper procedures is like fundamental. It's fundamental for police officers and anyone in any type of position because it ensures accountability, public trust, legal protection, and fairness and safety ultimately, adhering to proper procedures uphold principles of justice and safety in law enforcement. When we do these proper procedures, then we make sure all those things fall in line. So, hopefully, under this investigation, we will see if proper procedures were followed. Of course, there were things that happened before the video that I didn't see and afterwards. So, hopefully, under this investigation, truth will come out. But I want the community to understand that if things happened that wasn't followed, then we're gonna make sure that justice is served regardless in whatever case, with the police officer or with the civilian. We have to make sure we stand with the policies and procedures and truth. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think Councilman Penn really brings up a really good point. Is that what you don't see are the events that led up to the altercation, that led up to the use of force. And that's a really good example of how deceiving these videos can be when they're released in part. And do understand that it's only part of the evidence and part of the picture that we are able to ascertain as we do a more thorough investigation of what led up to the use of force. But we appreciate your comments. We assure you that we're gonna be as transparent as we can about the process.
All right, thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory.
Yeah, before we go forward with the agenda, I too want to take an opportunity to thank Chief Lamy for everything you have done with our Mobile Fire Department and the successes that have happened under your leadership. And of course, the entire team, because we all know it's not just one person. But you have been terrific to work with, in particular, in my district when we built a brand-new fire station. Chief Lamy was always available. He was willing to work with the community and help us get the kind of fire station that we wanted. And now, it is a role model for the rest of the city. So, I look forward to more of those coming up. But just, we thank you for your leadership and everything you've done. We certainly will miss you, but we wish you well in your next chapter.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
I want to join in with my colleague, Chief Lamy. It's been an honor to know you during this time. When I reached out to you about other little situations, you always responded very quickly. Of course, like when I heard about it, I was sad, you know? I was, oh, man, you know, we're losing a great person, a great leader. And when they say you're retiring, I'm like, he's so young, like what? Like, this can't be... Like, how are you retiring? Like, you know, but we definitely gonna miss you and congratulations to everything that you're moving forward towards. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
My sentiments are along the same lines. We will miss you on the educational board. Thank you for all your support and good luck. Adoption of the agenda.
So move. Improper moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for away with noise ordinance on November fourth on Burma Hills Drive, November nineteenth on Ochelle Road, October twenty-eighth on Calderwood Drive.
So move. Second. Improper moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearing today is a public hearing to rezon property located at two fifty-eight North Hamilton Street and two sixty-three North Franklin Street from T four and T five-point-one to T four.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? Anyone present? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to declare the structures at ten twenty-one Somerville Street, five oh eight Maple Street, twenty-four fifty-nine Richardson Street, and six seventeen Euclid Avenue, public notices and order them demolished, secured, and/or repaired.
This opened up the public hearing for these particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? And so, you may come down to the podium by stating your name.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is William Manuel and I'm property owner at five oh eight Maple. I just purchased this property maybe a year, over a year ago. And it's just been hard trying to find... it's just been hard trying to find, um, uh, credi- credible, um, uh, carpeters and stuff to, um, repair a lot of the, um, stuff that need to be repaired. Uh, I have bought a lot of, um, lumber and stuff to make repairs, but like I said, it been hard trying to find dependable, uh, contractors to do a lot of the work. Um, I try to, you know, maintain the property, I, 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 um, keep it boarded up and, and try to keep it clean around the, um, on the property. I have a lot of, um, issues with, uh, people, uh, breaking into the property once I secure, secure it with, um, well, by boarding it up and stuff, so I constantly have to go, go by and, uh, you know, keep an eye on it and make sure, you know, that no one is, um, going into the property. So, uh, I just ask for a little time to, um, you know, um, look for some dependable people to, to make the repairs, you know? I have not found, they, you know, like I said, bought a lot of material to do the work that need to be done to the property. So I'm just here asking for a little, little more time to, um, find, you know, people to, to, to make repairs.
Mr. Carroll?
I don't have a problem with extending any time to, uh, correct properties in, uh, especially these neighborhoods that need the property to be corrected and also to remain for, uh, affordable housing. Uh, my question to you is, how much time do you need? I mean, the last time I was over on Maple Street, looked at this house, the, the whole front of the house had, um, had been grown over with vegetation, is it still that way?
No, no, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, uh, correct it or not, it, it still had a lot of, um, trees over top, um, like, and, and, um, say, um, and the children's area, but I, I just recently bought, um, chainsaw and stuff to, um, to, to, to try to, you know, uh, correct that.
This is right across the street from, is it Tabernacle?
Yes, sir.
Right across the street from Tabernacle Baptist Church, and, um, the property across the street from you, the homeowners seem to be, you know, making an extra effort to clean up their properties, i- i- and I, I just, I mean, I go by there all the time, man, I'm gonna be honest, you know those two houses on Persimmons Street? I just restored those myself, and I've been watching your property now for about a year and a half, and it's just falling in.
I just...
So, I mean, and I don't see any, I haven't seen any work, I haven't seen any lumber, I haven't seen any improvement. So are you telling me, you know, are you going to do this, or is this just you saying, I wanna go get a permit and let it sit there another year?
No, no, I, I don't need another year, I don't need another year, uh, that's too much maybe to, um, to, to, to do the thing that, you know, that, the, the thing for us, I, you know, on the outside that, 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 that's asked of me to do.
So what are you asking? How much time do you need?
I guess maybe two months.
Two months? That, all right, six days.
They gonna have assisted days? All right, thank you. Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on any of these particular said items? If not, are these public hearings are closed?
Public hearing to fix the cost for demolition of structures at 356 Burton Avenue, 1704 Griffin Street, 607 Pettit Avenue, 1570 Orange Street, 1268 Pecan Street, 218 Ryland Street, 357 Ryland Street, and 1707 Marengo Drive.
Now this opened up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, you may come down to the podium by stating your name.
Hey, good morning.
Morning.
My name is Jerome Young, I'm the property owner at 1250 Pecan Street.
What's the address again?
1260 Pecan.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, I had got a notice about, uh, they went by there and, and tore my property down, and, uh, it's a lot of other regular houses in the area, and I said, why did they tear that house down? And you got a ton of other, other regular houses around that house, and they went and they tore my house down, you know? I didn't understand why, what they were doing, what they doing, when you got other distressed property in the same area, but you tore my house down, and you got all other houses falling down. So I'm trying to find what the city were doing, and trying to find out really what the city's doing, is just hand houses down and not giving people a chance to pick some of it, what they doing, you know?
There is a, a, a long process, um... There's a long process that we go through, uh, when trying to notify property owners of distressed property and properties that are a nuisance to the city, and properties where people may go in and get harmed, where they're in disrepair. And notification is posted everywhere possible, it's posted on the property, it's sent out in the mail, it's, it, it's sent to everybody that we think or, or that they can find legally to get it to. Um, sometimes things, you know, don't go as we planned, and we don't find the owner, and the property is deemed a nuisance, and it is removed, and we have an owner come back and say, hey, what happened to my property? That's starting to happen quite a bit. Um, and, and it's unfortunate that we lose, we're losing, like, these structures, you know, especially some of the ones that are, you know, dated back to the late 1800s, that are just as historic as the houses that are, again, three blocks away, where the ne- where these neighborhoods need the same types of attention with redevelopment and re- remodeling and revitalization. It's unfortunate. Um, but in this case, I'm sure that they've gone through every step they can. Uh, I don't know what I can do to help you, you still own the property, however, you own the dirt.
Yeah.
You, you still own the dirt. Now, this, this, this fine here will be, I guess, imposed as a lien, and we'll have to somehow, you may have to somehow take care of that. But again, this goes back to what I've been talking to all of you about, about, uh, underserved neighborhood that needs attention, where these neighborhoods need to feel us the same way that we feel these economic, uh, uh, development incentives, where we're spending ten million dollars over ten years. These neighborhoods need the same attention that we're given to economic development, so that these types of things don't continue to happen. It's unfortunate, man, if I can help you in any way, let me know, but right now, the house is down and we have to fix the cost. All right? Well, you can, uh... There's a guy named David Dockin by the back.
Okay.
And if you, go ahead.
Is y'all gonna, uh, make payment arrangements for the people that y'all done tore their house down and make payment arrangements for the money, uh, to pay for the money that we y'all done tore the house down?
Yes, sir, there's a guy, David Dockin by the back, he's, I want him to talk to you and, and help you however we can, and let me apologize, 'cause we should've been able to find you if you were inside the city, or if you just didn't respond to the doggone notice on the door, that's on you. But if we did not find you, let me apologize to you, and let me make this commitment again, we have neighborhoods that need us, that need revitalization on a constant basis, where we're creating equity in these neighborhoods, not just for us, but for everybody that's already living in them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to piggyback behind Councilman Carroll, nine times out of ten, it's not the city just going in tearing down the houses, the neighbors are complaining, and the neighbors don't wanna see those blighted properties in their neighborhood, so if the city responding, nine times out of ten, it is the neighbors that are complaining that's living in that particular community. Yes, ma'am?
1570 Lomond Street. My property was torn down, I had, I knew, I was informed by the city that they ain't gonna tear it down, I'm just like the other fella just left here, from staying. I have plenty more regular houses around mine that I see in my neighborhood, like I've been there ten or fifteen years, that way worse than my house was, and they just took upon theyself to call me and tell me they was gonna tear it down, because I, I, I'm, I'm disabled, I, I have mental problems. I raised seven kids and fourteen grandkids, I, I have bad nerves and I, my aunt left that house, me, half a month, say. And I had another house behind me that was, that go with the house that was not repaired, but I took the oil clean, I put roads around to make it look for jungle, but he said it was, Dave Williams said it was a, just looking from the public, it, it didn't pay the public. So I had, they had tear down, I told them to tear it down, if that's the problem, but I don't have the money to fix it right now, I'm disabled, my husband, he disabled, he hasn't, he's one league, he worked all his life, it's in his favor. And Mobile City of Fightville, we don't have the money right now, we have a bunch of rich, and we have to help with it. We didn't have the money to tear the house down, and I told him, I say, well, if you, if that's what you want, we tear the house down, but I'm, I don't have money to fix it right now, and I don't have money to tear it down. He didn't, he just said it was gonna be torn down, I was sitting in my house one day, just listening to the TV, and sun was just coming down like thunder. Knew what I had, walked out the door and seen no clouds, so I was wondering what was this for? So I go through that door, and they just tearing the house down, it just coming down. And all of a sudden, I say, I called him back, Dave, me first, said, I say, you told, you gonna inform me? And they told I was down, and I told you, my upper house in front is connected to plumbing, with both houses. I wanted to tell me, so I didn't actually, man, not to set my plumbing up, some first house is connected with it. Soon I look, he backed up, tearing the house down, running water everywhere. I take medication every day, I, I take three times a day, didn't have water, take medication, I haven't bought any with me. I had to go to the house for two weeks to get water, just to take my nose and have a bathroom to use. I don't think this is bad. I called him, I asked him, I say, I asked you personally, if you would just tell the people I had plumbing, who's genius, that's something, he said, well, I told, I, I, I didn't tell him, I, I, and I said, well, I told you, I said, I had asked you, it wouldn't be no problem if he tears down, don't tear my plumbing up. He told me plumbing up, I went and got plumbing for four or five weeks, no water, had to run my daughter's house, it was all water, getting out water, there's a water river, and, and waiting water pumping in the refrigerator, couldn't take that, couldn't use bathroom, and now they send me a bill for two hundred, two thousand, six hundred dollars. I said, I could've, I said, but, and then I had to give a promise, gonna fix my site, and put my plumbing back, I, I have a new key, I got grandkids, I have one or one grandkid, I have a new plumber waiting this third year.
So you saying that the plumbing was not disconnected before the house was torn? Yeah, if you, if you...
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Carroll?
Mr. President? See, uh, in, in neighborhoods in the city of Mobile that are older, where, um, and this is going back to Bob Voltnor, when the experience was there and we didn't map anything, these old neighborhoods had alleyways where the water in laterals did not connect in the front of the house, but they connected in the rear. So when two houses were in the back, they shared the same, shared the same water and lateral connections which the sewer and water ran from, but then ran out to one of the side streets. It, this happens more than you know, especially in older neighborhoods where lines are shared. So this is, this is, uh, an- another unfortunate circumstance. But the, 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 the situation here is, is that, when are we gonna realize that we can't punish people when they don't have the resources to take care of something? When are they gonna start feeling us? That's an issue. That is an issue here, we're seeing it over and over and over again. We are willing to give ten million dollars to, to, uh, for economic development incentives everywhere else, but when are we gonna start really digging into these neighborhoods that need us? They need us just as much as these major corporations in the city. They are hurting just as bad as those major corporations with hundreds of millions of dollars, and this is just another prime example of how we could be helping right here. This is another prime example, we just had two today. I wonder how many more we have? I'm so sorry.
Yes, sir, I would, I would like to say, uh, if I went to organizations trying to get my house fixed up, the hood, if I can get a sense of hood, I would count the way up, I'd even, even go help him fix it up. I couldn't make them fix my house, I was just going by the rules and regulations, asking them who they helped me in, and they called, they, they were helping. I called, they called, and I just got in, I didn't make the hood, I didn't do it right like you, someone to help me fix up my house.
Well, talk, there's Davis in the back.
And I had an adjustment, sir, I couldn't get the front and fix myself.
If you would, please talk to the guy in the back in the white shirt for me, uh, David with you. See, he's right back there, man, and, and again, if it's anything I can do to help you, please reach out.
My name's Milton Bryant, concerning 1707 Marengo Drive. This property actually belonged to my sister, uh, she went down in 2005 with a massive heart attack, and, uh, my father and mother was put over her, uh, estates and, and, uh, handling her, her, her business. They got too old, the probate court awarded it to me and told me to be her guardian. Since then, my father has passed, my mother's ninety-two years old, she has dementia, and I'm still trying to deal with my sister's property. Her husband died in thirteen, and she died, uh, in nineteen, and I've been taking and trying to take and keep the property up. Uh, they sent me notice that they wanted that house down, but the problem was, everything's still locked up in probate, and they found, um, reconciliation has been turned in, but I haven't gotten the information back from my lawyer. So I was sent, uh, a notice that it was, I think, thirty-four hundred dollars that I was going to owe. I have no problem, uh, with it being paid for the house being tore down, but I don't have that kind of money, and the property is not mine. It belongs to my sister and my brother-in-law, and they both are deceased. And, uh, so I'm, I'm kinda waiting, you know, that was a really amazing, the probate court had everything locked up.
The gentleman that's in the rear?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just see if you can go ahead and speak to him and everything, and he'll tell you the direction that you need to take.
The house has been torn down?
Yeah.
It's been torn down already, yes.
So you talked about payment again?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yeah, Ms. Reynolds?
So this is just to fix the cost for that tear down, the doors for houses? The house has already been tore down, and I, I think they do, they will work, the city will work with you on repayment of the cost?
Mm-hmm.
That we'll fix. Um, if you're not able to pay, I believe they'll just go through the lien process, they'll put a lien, you know, on the property itself.
Okay, then, so like I say, uh, once probate releases it and I'm able to sell it, I'll do that, I have no problem with doing it, uh, and it can be taken care of then, but, uh, right now, I don't have it, I have, uh, uh, my own problems I'm trying to deal with, um, along with my mother, uh, which is now, I'd say ninety-two years old, and she's a handful.
Question, Mr. Carroll? Did you allow for the demolition of the house because of the lack of revenue? Is that why you allowed?
Yes, uh, it was...
So, so you basically consented because you, you just couldn't, you didn't have the revenue in order to fix it up?
Yes.
Or the lo- or a, ability to obtain a loan?
Yeah.
But the house could've been saved?
No.
It couldn't have been saved?
The house couldn't be saved, it was on, it's in the, uh, Dog River area, doing Katrina, the water was about a foot and a half from the ceiling. It was mildew all the way through the house, the floors, the wooden floors was buckled, uh, and I went down there and boarded it up. I had a gentleman that would keep the front area, keep it clear and clean, uh, but, uh, when they notified me, you know, they said it was gonna tear it down, so there wasn't anything I could really do about it.
And that was based on, that was based on revenue?
Yeah.
Personal revenue?
Ms. Reynolds?
Yeah, so in this case, it's a little bit different than what's been described in maybe some other cases. In this case, it sounds like they didn't have the ability to tear it down, and it wasn't repairable, so the government came in, stepped in and provided... So the government came in, stepped in and provided the help to tear this structure down. Although there, there, there will be a, a bill attached to it at some point, it'll be tied to the property, where you're still able to get it torn down. The, the neighborhood as a whole will benefit, of course, from the, the house being torn down. So if you could talk to Mr. David Dolanbaugh, he can help you understand the process of if you wanted to pay, you know, now, or if you wanted to wait until the liens filed and settle up later on, that, that would be fine. He's right back there in the white shirt.
Okay, then, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Is anyone else president that would like to address the council?
Good morning, it's Sabrina Mass. Now, I'm really mad today. And I, I respect everybody in this room, but this is a bunch of bull. Help the people out. Excuse me, I just have time to speak public hearing.
Yeah, on which item, which, which?
All of them that spoke.
No, you, you had to.
Of every single citizen that just spoke, I'm speaking for every single citizen that you had just had a public hearing. Public hearing, not for no one particular person, but every person that spoke. Help the people, help the people. If you guys know that these people have not been informed, have not been notified, cannot be, find the people, find them. This is the city of Mobile. If the, if the United States of America can go find Bin Laden, or anybody overseas, surely, I know you know my address, and everybody's address in his city, find them, look for them, search for them. The city of Mobile spends millions and millions and millions and trillions of dollars every time I look around, and you cannot help the poor people in the city of Mobile. It's time to stop, it's time to stop playing these games, it's time to get together. We wanna be one Mobile, and in order to be one Mobile, we have to help each other. The poor need help, rich help the poor. I do not proclaim myself to be a rich woman, but I'm a blessed woman, and guess what, I get out every single day. If somebody sends me something, I'm gonna get out and I'm gonna help them the best I can. If that means money, if that means my mouth, if that means whatever. I am so sick and tired of seeing people suffer in the city of Mobile. We proclaim we love the city of Mobile. Excuse me.
You have to speak on one of these particular items.
The particular item is not one particular item, sir, it's on every, I said, I'm gonna say it again, I'm speaking for every single person that was on this public hearing, and you guys better step up, cause God is not pleased.
Is anyone else president that would like to address the council on any of these particular items?
Good morning. Uh, my name is Melissa Davis, I'm the owner of Three Fifty Seven Rollins.
Of what?
Three Fifty Seven Rollins.
Rollins, okay, go right where you are.
This property was burned down by squatters. I was going through the legal process to get them removed, but it was burned down. And since then, I haven't been able to pay someone to knock it down, so it was knocked down. And I'm asking for, if possible, an extended time to pay the amount that's owed, because I'm currently in school, and I'm not able to pay it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, uh, Three Fifty Seven Rollins? Is that the corner Rollins in Congress?
Um, no, it's not in the corner, it's like in the middle of the street.
Middle street?
Yes, it's across from the street.
Yeah, and again, this is, this was air property for you?
No, this was a property that I purchased, it was supposed to be an investment property, but upon purchasing it, there were squatters in there, and they would not leave. And I was in the process of going eviction and going through the courts, but I wasn't able to get them out. And they burned the house down, and, you know. Yeah, so it was, it was not, um, I was going to try to repair it, but I'm pretty sure I would have probably had to just knock it down, because it was pretty bad, but I was working towards knocking it down, but, you know, I wasn't able to pay before it was already.
You still on the dirt, look, right?
Yes, I do.
Could you leave us a number where I can reach you in the future, please? And please see David, I don't think, I'm pretty sure David can work out something with some type of arrangements to, to help you.
All right, thank you.
David's the guy, the heavyset guy with the light blue, white shirt on, that's outside.
Heavyset.
I was trying to describe him to you.
Coach Glenn, yes, he would be mad at me if I let this go by. David was a bodybuilder in high school, that's how he's got all of his muscles back there now, so.
Go check, I would talk to him, thank you for coming down. Is anyone else president that would like to address the council on, on any of these particular sad items? If not, leave public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Estella Trotter.
She's not present.
Reverend Tony Allgood.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tony Allgood. Two weeks ago, I addressed the council and the body on the need for transparency within police department. And at no time did I blanket every individual police officer as a problem. I did have a chief to tell me one time, when he was interviewing from the department here, he interviewed one young man who said, yeah, I can't wait to get on the floor so I can shoot people. Fortunately, he did not get hired. We don't know how many others may have felt the same way he did. We want the videos released concerning Juwan Dallas, so the people can see what the police is saying. It looks like, though, that the only transparency that we can get is from the people themselves when they take videos of an incident involving the police. And we don't know how much longer that's going to last before they make a law against that. But we see what happened in Decatur. This has got to stop, there has to be some way, some training, if police are really going to serve and protect everybody equally, to be able to de-escalate a situation, rather than by their actions and by their words escalating. We want justice for Juwan and the others who have been exposed to excessive uncalled for policing, brutality, or even murders. I think last year, there were three incidences of excessive force that we used. So transparency, I, I'm just putting it out to the people. Keep your phones on, keep your cameras on, and keep taking pictures. Cause we want justice not only for Juwan, but for everybody else out there too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Robert Clapton?
Good morning, Law Council to the administration. My name is Robert Clapton. I'd like to take a trip back in time, two thousand twenty, before I address Mr. Christopher Jones, if that's how everything end. July tw- two thousand. Two? I can't hear you. In two thousand twenty, in the midst of the unrest that we have in Mobile, we had what is called a toll. During that, we had the United States Attorney, I won't call his name, we had the former DA, we had the former Chief of Police, the former sheriff, and the former Director of Public Safety. We asked him a few questions, and I still have a copy of these questions, in fact, I have an entire interview as well. But some of those questions was, what specific protocols are in place to require officers to intervene and stop excessive force used by other officers? And in event that they don't, what are the consequences? Next, are officers retrained and recertified in using non-lethal force, proper de-escalation and apprehension techniques that were in share? Black suspects live through their encounters with police officers, especially here in Mobile, maybe we were looking into the future. Are the training reports affecting law enforcement reports and officers' reports available for public view? What is the department policy on officers who have a history of excessive force? Especially when that force has not been administered equally? And are functioning body cameras considered an inadmissible part of the law enforcement uniform? Which at that particular time, apparently, it wasn't because it wasn't turned on. I'd like to thank the Director of Public Safety and the Chief at that time by making it and taking action to make sure these body cameras weren't turned on. But if I go back to Mr. Christopher Jones, if a man that was sleeping on top of a building, encouraged, asked, enforced, demanded to come down, but yet he loses his life right there. I have to ask, are those officers trained and recertified on non-lethal force? Granted, he had a gun, granted, and it was said that, hey, he had a gun, a pistol stock. What did that have to do with this man losing his life? Well, he apparently wasn't a threat. And we back up to Mr. Juwan Dallas, I have to ask, are officers retrained and recertified using non-lethal force, proper de-escalation and apprehension techniques? Man was sitting in a car, pulled, coerced, encouraged, asked, drug out, whatever, we don't have no idea. Because we go to the last one, which is the body cam, body cam's not available, not available for many reasons. But then again, what happened next? Oh, he was trying to take the test, and then he ran. Was that a reason for him to lose his life? No, and I can take it all the way back to Mr. Kellen Jones. Granted, there was a problem going on with this particular house. There was a, 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 mm, attention placed by SWAT and the police, he jumped out of the window. Can I have a minute, please?
Uh, council, you still have a minute?
No, you still have a minute?
And he was shot twice in the upper shoulder, once in the lower back. Was he jumping out of the window, or was he hit in the ground? That is the question that can never be answered. But yet, with each and every one of these individuals, we have a problem. That concern is that, A, they're young, black, African-Americans. We don't want any police to be shot, we don't want any citizen to be shot, we don't want anyone to lose their life. We have to have our law enforcement, we have to have them, because without law enforcement, we have anarchy, we have chaos. But yet, we have to have equity, we have to have equality. There are no ins and buts about it. Granted, as Mr. Allgood said, there's no transparency, the transparency is not there. What about the body, body cam, what about, well, we can't show that evidence, evidence. What about the guns, we'll never see the guns, because those guns are what, evidence? Next, what about the toxicology, well, we were in toxicology, why am I waiting on the toxicology report when a man was just shot? And last, but not least, it has been turned over to the grand jury.
Mr. Clapton, you had us asked for four minutes there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Question, Mr. Carroll?
This incident doesn't fall into the realm of us sending information to the grand jury, does it? Maybe the council, I mean, the city attorney should answer that. Is this a grand jury type of incident with the, uh, cameras that we just saw with the incident that happened last Thursday? Yes. The answer is, I don't know that right now. Okay, so if it hasn't been sent to the grand jury, then there's. I didn't say it hasn't, I said I don't know that right now. All right, so the answer to the question is, is that can somebody in this room tell me whether or not our police forces sent this? It, it happened last Thursday, so some actions have been made. The action to put him on administrative leave, and then whatever action happens after that. There was evidently, I guess, charges rendered, you know, against the, uh, the individual, but nothing has been filed against the police officer. So my question is, is that if there is body camera footage, and it does not go under the, the auspices that it can't be seen, then why not release all of the footage for everybody to see? Yeah, and, and it's not, from my, I think, my recollection right now.
Hold, hold on, Mr. Carroll, we got some sidebar conversation going out there in the audience. I'm gonna ask if you needed your care on a sidebar conversation, please step out the door, please.
So why not release the body camera footage for everyone to see what's happened? That way, there would be, uh, no issues with our statements, and the statements that have been made, being that there's no grand jury in this situation, and, and that camera footage is available.
So all too often, we make assumptions that are not accurate when we make blanket statements. So I wanna make, what, what you're saying is it's not going to the grand jury?
What I'm asking, excuse me.
Okay, so I wanna make sure that that is a question and not a statement. And, and the councilman said as much, but, because I want the, the public to be clear. You have to think about this, there's two, two aspects to this, okay? One is the gentleman, the citizen who was in handcuffs, he is being charged with a felony. That will go to the grand jury, all right? That's one aspect of it, that will go to the grand jury. Two, people requesting have to have standing. They must have standing, under the new law that was just implemented in September, they must have standing to ask for the documents, so the document being the body cam. What will happen is, this gentleman will be afforded an attorney, a criminal attorney, and that person will be able to request it. He's, he can also request it. So he or his lawyer will be able to request it. Anybody who is caught by voice or image on a body cam has standing to request it. But it will likely go to the grand jury for one of two reasons. One is because there's an investigation, but certainly because there's a charge of a felony. Now, you're asking me whether or not it's gone to them already, that is, that's what I'm telling you, I can't answer that question. So, uh, uh, again, please define standing for the general public to hear it. Sure, happy to do so. So standing requires that you are actually, both by policy and by state law, that you're either shown by image on the body cam, if you're that person that you have standing to request it. Two, if your voice is being picked up, then you have standing. That is whether you are a defendant, a bystander, or a victim. If you're either caught by image or by voice on body cam, you have standing to request to view it. Remember, the caveat is still there, that if it's going to a grand jury, whether it's a felony or an investigation, you're still dealing with the same thing. So I don't know whether or not it's being sent there, but our protocol is to make sure we send it, especially when there's a felony involved.
So that also means that if the family wasn't there, or someone in the family, or, or individual that is related or of, of standing to the person, meaning family, they cannot request it, because they were not there, their image wasn't on the camera, nor their voice, is that?
That is correct, if that person is, if that individual is still alive and living, if it's not in the state or an attorney, they cannot request it. So in this particular incident, you're correct.
One more thing, Mr. President, Chris Jones. For those in the community that knew Chris Jones, I think everyone knows that Chris was mentally challenged, in that Chris goes through a cycle of, of, of a lot of things. I think people know that, that are from that area. I don't know if the police officer responding to this knew that, or recognized it, or had the ability to recognize this. I think it is becoming more and more prevalent that our police department has some additional training maybe, or someone in the department that can recognize when things may be more of a mental challenge than they are of an aggressive challenge. Now, I'm aware of all of the things that Mr. Jones had in his possession, but still yet, we, I think we need to maybe step up our game there. I know that Alter Point has put a program in place to where they have some, a mental response to, uh, issues and areas and people in our, in our city. But I also think that we need to put more of an effort into our police department now, because this may become a growing situation that we need to handle. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk.
Tracy Preyer. Good morning, Mayor, staff. My name is Tracy Preyer, I am the Vice President of the Gulf Coast Gladiators here in Mobile. Your professional basketball team right here in Mobile. And we're here this morning just to let you know that we are gearing up our season on November the eighteenth. Our games will be played at Matty T. Blunt on Saturdays, seven o'clock, Sundays at three P.M. So, we're wanting to invite each and every one of you all to come by and support your Mobile team. We are more than just basketball, we are about changing lives, one person at a time. I'm gonna let you now hear from our media specialist.
Hi, my name is, um, Joy Thomas. I'm currently the Social Media Specialist for the ABA team, the Gulf Coast Gladiators. My plan is to bring exposure to this team through social media content across all platforms, enable to raise awareness to the community and city to help support young men who are still working hard to gain a second chance to chase their dreams. I wanted to share a part of my story to show just how important it is to support young minds and talents such as myself, as we are the future. I attended the University of Birmingham, but due to family and financial issues, I was sent back home. And I kind of lost focus, I didn't know where God would put me next in my life. I'm still taking online classes, but I didn't know what my purpose in life was and where, why, why I was sent home. So, I was reached out by Charlie McCants to work as a Social Media Specialist for his team. We often question God's plan, and we wonder where he would, would put us next in life. But I thank God that he put me with his team because it gives me the opportunity to learn, to grow, to chase my career, chase my dreams, and also help the community and help young men who still have the right to dream. Thank you.
And I just want to add in closing, we will be a force to be reckoned with. We have an outstanding team, and we will represent Mobile to the highest. The championships will be held here next year, and we are hoping to bring the trophy home to you all. Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations to you all.
James Williams.
Mr. Williams, President.
I don't know if that authorized. My name is James Williams, my friends call me J.W. I will speak on policing, community interactions, with a focus on the law and basic human needs. Most of our laws enforced today were taken from penal codes found in the Bible, the Ten Commandments, and others. All of us are guilty of something speeding, lying, stealing, etc. There is the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. Examples, the letter of the law states that if you're going one mile per hour over the speed limit, one is hell as being guilty. The spirit of the law gives leeway through grace and gives mercy allowing for less than a guilty verdict. Romans thirteen verses one through five from Paul's letter of justification by faith advises every soul be subject unto higher powers. For there is no power but of God, and they that resist shall receive themselves damnation. Rulers are not a terror to good works, but to the evil. With thou in not be afraid of the powers, do that which is good, and thou shall have praise of the same. For he is a minister of God, and to thee for good. He's a friend, a doctor, a protector, a brother, a social worker, a person who loves people. Everyone can't wear a law enforcement hat, hats, and be a minister of God. We must enlist our community for feedback, and they will reflect continuously the fruit of good works and goodwill towards them by office. A community must provide moral truths and messages towards their fellow men. Guns take lives, they don't save lives. In Proverbs nine, nine, give instruction to a wise man, and he will be yet wiser. Teach a just man, and he will increase in learning. Songs eighty-two and three, defend the poor and farthest, do justice to the afflicted and needy. But in Second Timothy one and seven, for God hath not given us a spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of sound man. Don't run from law enforcement, use the court system. The Constitution of the United States is the supreme law of the nation. Learn from it, and your rights there end. Any unlawful activity of deadly assault, manifesting extreme indifference to the value of human life can be met with use of force in defense of a person. A policeman acting outside...
Mr. Williams. Counsel, can I stand here one more minute, if I can get two council members?
Yes, sir.
One more minute, Mr. Williams.
A policeman acting outside his lawful duty and authority is subject to criminal laws in Alabama, titled thirteen eight dash three dash thirty-three eight. Jesus replied to the scribes regarding their commandments. And thou shall love the Lord our God as one Lord. And thou shall love the Lord thy God with all thy heart and with all thy soul, and with all thy strength. This is the first commandment. And the second is light, namely this, thou shall love thy neighbor as thyself. There is none other commandment greater than this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Pan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I know we had multiple speakers that, that came down, and, um, I just want to share this before we move on with our agenda. I, I definitely understand what Reverend Allgood stated about transparency. You know, one thing that I, I learned, um, by becoming, um, a council member is not to take things personal. Um, I think that sometimes in any industry or anything that you get a part of, sometimes we can, can get our feelings involved in this. And sometimes that, um, a, as a thought of a politician, people think that, you know, negative. So, if I'm talking to someone, people always maybe come from whatever their prior experience dealing with a politician. So, a lot of times, I have to rebuild that trust. The point of me saying that is, I believe that in this time, we are building trust, and we can't take it personally. Not, maybe if certain things didn't happen, you may then do that, or you, but you rebuilding that trust. And I think it's very vital that we get to a place that we rebuild trust, it's crucial. And it's an ongoing process that requires transparency, like Reverend Allgood stated. It, it requires accountability. It requires community engagement. Councilman Carroll made a great point in talking about the relationship of understanding the individual in the community. You know, I saw a video of a young lady walking into a, a police station, bamming on the window, and then eventually it starts shooting. I'm not sure if that police station had a relationship with that young lady, but they was able to wait patiently and apprehend the person, with nothing happen. That may be from community engagement, understanding that individual. Maybe that's from building relationships and, and communicating from Alter Point and talking about mental health, this is person going through that, be mindful, they're not threatened. Um, you can take them down without hurting them, and all these different situations, that's, that's that community engagement. That's that training piece that I think is very vital. I ask those questions because, um, earlier in pre-council about what is the policy and procedures? I know it's normal that if you feel threatened, that you have to protect yourself. Um, if I was on the street and someone come around to me and, and grab me in a certain way, naturally, I want to protect myself. But I also realize that in certain positions that I, I'm in, that it's certain things that I can't do when I'm in a certain role. So, I have been in positions where I have to restrain people, and I've been in positions where I was hit in the face, and of course, if I was on the street, my reaction is to punch back. But in that current role, I had to learn how to be able to take that person down without punching them back. So, are there trainers in place for certain situations where you don't have to go to the immediately, to the, the force? These are questions that I think Mr. Clifton talked about, that I think we have to look into and have those open conversations. And not allow our emotions and feelings to get involved when we starting to ask those tough questions. Because that's a part of it. The only way for us to get better is to have those discussions and ask those tough questions. And if we're not able to answer that, then that's a problem because that means that we're saying we're perfect. And no one's, I know I'm not perfect. So, when people criticize me, I have to say, okay, I have to go look at that and look at myself in the mirror and say, is that something that I need to work on? And I believe we have to do that as a, you know, we have to be better at that, not just as a community, as a city, but even me, as a council member. And so, I just wanted to, to state that we have to rebuild that trust. And hopefully, and we can't take it personally as well, that know that. Maybe it wasn't me that caused that issue, but I want to be able to rebuild that trust with my community. So, hopefully, we can be more transparent and accountable, have that community engagement, training, and have those open conversations. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm gonna ask the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, and I believe that, uh, he's gone, oh, is he? Yeah, let's look to have a committee meeting, uh, real soon, and, uh, question that the council have, uh, counsel just, uh, give it to the Chairman, and, uh, Chairman, we can try to give it to the Public Safety Committee, Public Safety, and we can just have a committee meeting, uh, sometime in the future. Mr. President.
Before you move on, um, my thoughts have been flowing back to the Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, I know at one time, we decided, or may have decided to, to leave them inactive. I think it may be time that we, um, we ask the Citizens Advisory Committee to reconvene.
I was going to invite the, um, Public Safety Committee to come out to the police range, and let's look at policy, procedure, and training. I know CJ, probably Joel and Gina, I think y'all have done it, but a lot of the new council members have no idea how we train. And I, I think we would like that opportunity to show you to what extent we go to de-escalate situations.
Madam Clerk.
Ordinance is held over, zero-two-zero-fourty-seven, ordinance to provide for the reinforcement of seven council districts of the city of Mobile.
Motion to lay over to thirty-one October. Second. They're promptly moved, and second, to lay over to the thirty-first. Uh, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I lay over to thirty-first.
Sixty-four-zero-forty-eight, consent approval of a conditional use permit to allow a home-based daycare in an R one property located at six-eleven Shannon Street.
They're promptly moving second, in the discussion.
Yes, sir. I have a question for our attorney. Since, excuse me, since this is coming to us from the Planning Commission, but my, my understanding is that it's coming to us to no vote. So, the vote to, it needs five votes to approve it.
That is correct, council member.
So, the, the motion is to approve?
The motion is to approve, so if you oppose the grant, you're gonna vote no on the motion.
Another discussion. All in favor? All opposed?
No.
I'm failed, not a clerk.
Consent resolutions held over, forty-ten-oh-six and ten-oh-seven, declaring structures at one-seventy North Avenue Street and eleven-twelve Newman Lane, public nuisances and ordering them demolished or secured.
So moved.
Second. They're promptly moving second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over, zero-one-eleven-twenty-five, authorized funding agreement for USA Wooden College of Medicine to construct an education and research building.
So moved. Second.
They're promptly moving second, in the discussion. Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Yes, Mr. President. This morning's conversation, uh, was, I guess, long drawn out, and I've made the points that I wanted to make about us and ten million dollars over ten years. But this morning, you've all heard the need for us to be involved in communities where people really need us. I find it really hard right now, knowing what people in my district really need with housing and infrastructure, and the ability to rebuild neighborhoods. I find it really hard to do this, but it appears as if though this council really wants this to happen. I even spoke to the mayor briefly after pre-council, and his words to me, and some of the words that I always use, is not hard to do what right, what's right, and I think it's the right thing to do. So, if it's the right thing to do, then I, I don't mind going along with this. But I want each and every one of you to realize that it's also the right thing to do to revitalize neighborhoods. It's the right thing to do to get money into places where people don't have it. We heard three people today tell us that I simply don't have the money, but I want my structure. They want their neighborhoods revitalized, they want clean and safe, affordable housing, they want those things. And as a city, we have a obligation to the people and constituents we serve. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. Pan.
Um, thank you, um, Mr. President. I want to, I, I was, um, of course, listening to President Bonner. He answered a lot of questions, um, this morning in pre-council that I had, um, so I definitely will be su- supporting this initiative today. Um, I think it's, uh, South Alabama is a great partner to the city of Mobile. Also, one of the reasons why it's already budgeted, um, that the council have approved already for economic development. And so, it was, it's, it's a different fund, but I also want to join in with my colleague and say that we know that it's needs, um, in our community as well, in our city regarding housing. But I believe these are two separate things, but both require needs. And so, hopefully, uh, we can move forward towards working, making sure that we have housing, um, in our community as well.
Another discussion.
Mr. President.
Uh, Vice President.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you, and, uh, I, I join my colleagues in supporting, uh, this initiative for the University of South Alabama and their new medical school. Uh, as we all know, this is a big economic driver for the city, and I'm talking about the medical school. We already know that, that, uh, university itself is, uh, an economic engine for our city with the number of employees, um, that are, that work for University of South Alabama, and then including the new ones from Providence Hospital, and of course, just the millions of dollars that are generated every day by the university. So, again, they are a terrific partner for the city of Mobile. The state, the federal government, and the foundation have already put in funds, and South is going to borrow money. So, the funds that we put into this initiative for the new College of Medicine will come from our Economic Development Fund, which is exactly what this fund is set out to do. That was its mission when we formed that, back when CJ and I were on the council, we put the extra part of the one cent sales tax that we passed into economic development. So, hopefully, the county then will come on board and join us, and that will make it more possible for you all to continue work, to hire the employees, to do the research, uh, to get the faculty that you need there, and then provide more physicians for the city of Mobile, because as we need affordable housing, yes, we do. We all agree that we need more affordable housing in the city of Mobile, I don't think anybody disagrees with that. But they also need health insurance, they need healthcare, and that's what this will help provide. So, I hope everyone will vote for this, that it will be a unanimous vote toward helping to fund this terrific initiative for the city of Mobile and for the University of South Alabama, and the flagship university that we have here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
And I'd like to, uh, follow...
And I'd like to, uh, follow behind my colleagues, uh, and understand, uh, Councilman Carroll, uh, passion. Uh, as Ms. Gregory stated, uh, some years ago, you know, we had, you know, formed the CIP. And, uh, one of the ideas that I had about putting money to aside because we had just landed Airbus and, uh, pretty much I was like, we knew that other companies going to be coming for economic development. So we need to put some money to aside. So the money was set aside, you know, in the, what, actually one cent sales tax. So we have a pot of money over there. Uh, we also have a pot of money too, uh, for housing. But the thing about it is, you know, we need a roadmap, where, you know, the roadmap for housing, the roadmap to help people to attain affordable housing, uh, to afford affordable housing. You know, and that's what Mr. Carroll's passion, you know, is. And that's one reason why I called for a committee meeting on next Tuesday. Uh, for, you know, not only the council can see the roadmap, but for the citizens can also see the roadmap, you know, uh, you know, to attain, you know, affordable housing in our, you know, in our city. Uh, the most important thing is that, you know, well, USA, you know, uh, not only that, you know, it will help to keep citizens, you know, from traveling out of town, go and see other doctors. You know, we hear people all the time going to Texas, you know, going to, you know, for the council institution, going to Birmingham, you know, we need to try to keep people here. And I believe passing this is gonna help, you know, the medical, um, um, our medical here, here in the city of Mobile. You know, and again, to, uh, make sure that we have the doctors that we need, uh, that people don't have to travel so far. Uh, I believe that this is gonna be great. Again, not only that I have constituents that use, uh, USA Hospital for their medical needs and, you know, but we also have constituents that works for USA Hospital. Uh, so therefore, I think this is a great investment within our city. Again, this is two different things. But again, you know, there's a pot of money for economic development. And I think this is a great way and then, you know, you know, putting this money towards, uh, USA by using for economic development. But we also have a pot of money that we have for housing. And again, we just needed to know the roadmap, but what is the roadmap to attain affordable homes in the city of Mobile? Um, again, but I'm grateful to support this, you know, initiative on today. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Zero eight eleven twenty-six and eleven twenty-seven are approving purchase orders for fuel for various city departments and to chem tech for, for fire skid units for Mobile Fire and Rescue Department. Zero eight eleven twenty-eight, approved purchase order to E-Building for one-year project management software subscription. Twenty-one eleven twenty-nine, eleven thirty are authorizing contracts with Osprey Initiative to install and maintain litter collection devices citywide and with Bill Smith Electric, uh, for cruise terminal electrical upgrades for New Gangway. Twenty-one eleven thirty-one authorized contract with RHD Building for construction of Heroes Plaza. Twenty-one eleven thirty-two, eleven thirty-three are contracts with Pro-Tech Video for telemetry and consulting services. Twenty-one eleven thirty-four authorized contract with UAV Survey for engineering and analytics consulting. Thirty-one eleven thirty-five authorized grant application to the US Department of Development Administration for the Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant for GIS based map upgrades.
So moved.
Second. They're probably moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced sixty-four zero four-nine.
Our council rules this will lay over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, zero nine eleven thirty-nine through sixty eleven fifty-eight.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second. They're probably moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Zero nine eleven thirty-nine, transfer funds from District One discretionary account to general fund MPD special locks account to assist with the Tomerville LaFlore Alumni Association parade. Thirty-one eleven forty authorized grant application to the Office of National Drug Control Policy for combating overdose through community level intervention initiative grant, no local match. Thirty-seven eleven forty-one and eleven forty-two are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine on offer premises license to Big Blue Weekly on South University Boulevard and for issuance of a special events more than thirty days license to Top Off on Satchel Page Drive. Forty eleven forty-five, eleven forty-seven, eleven forty-eight, eleven forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-four are declaring the structures at twenty-four fifty-nine Richardson Street and fixing the cost for demolition of structures at three fifty-six Burton Avenue, seventeen oh four Griffin Street, six oh seven Tated Avenue, fifteen seventy Orange Street, twelve sixty Nine Street, two eighteen and three fifty-seven Rodland Street, seventeen oh seven Marengo Drive. Sixty eleven fifty-five approve award of special bonus to the Office of the Month. Sixty eleven fifty-six, fifty-seven and fifty-eight are determining appropriations suggest for development laboratory school, Tomerville LaFlore Alumni Association, and to Coltville Descendants Association serves a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved.
Second. They're probably moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Forty eleven forty-three, eleven forty-four and eleven forty-six are declaring the structures at ten twenty-one Summerville Street, five oh eight Maple Street, and six seventeen Yucatan Avenue. Public nuisances and ordering them demolished, secured, repaired.
Move to hold over sixty days.
Second.
They're probably moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll lay over sixty days.
CIP resolutions being introduced, twenty-one eleven fifty-nine authorized contract with Fleet Engineering Company for parking and accessibility upgrades and engineering at Westside Park.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of this resolution as read.
Second.
They're probably moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not a clerk.
I read the, it was, we should probably read it. Um, twenty-one eleven fifty-nine authorized contract with Fleet Engineering for parking and accessibility upgrades and engineering at Westside Park.
So moved.
Second. They're probably moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced, zero one eleven sixty through thirty-one eleven sixty-five.
Per council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Announcements.
Uh, District Four, Councilman Reynolds?
Yes, sir. Very briefly, uh, Chief Lamie has stepped out, but I wanted to take advantage of the opportunity that we still have to commend him on a job well done. Uh, Chief Lamie, uh, I feel like has always supported me and I've done my very best to support him and the department. And he will be sorely missed by our city, um, going forward. And that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Reynolds. District Six, Councilman Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, do want to remind everybody that we have our first community meeting tonight at six o'clock at the Connie Hudson Senior Center. Um, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll set better dates before, but I did want to get a meeting, um, on the books and get it, uh, get it at least had before the end of the year and before everybody got busy with holidays. Um, on the, um, on the agenda today was the, was the Westside Improvement. And that's a big step, um, for Westside Park. Uh, you know, that's a park that's, uh, kind of been on their own for a little bit. And, uh, I really appreciate everyone taking immediate consideration of that so we can go ahead and start getting drawings and everything done. Um, and then, um, also, congratulations to South, that the medical college is great. I thank, uh, thank my fellow council members for, uh, for, for voting on that unanimously. And that's gonna be a huge step for, for the city. Um, and then, uh, finally, I did want to say that, uh, we have a Public Services Committee meeting at one o'clock. Yeah, just on that.
We'll help you out.
Congratulations.
District Two, Councilman Carroll?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this morning on my desk was a map for reapportionment for the city of Mobile. Um, and it, the boundaries were somewhat clear. Um, there's some, um, pretty good substantial changes to District Two. Uh, one bit on the western side going almost out to Pine Hill. And then on the north, northwestern side also, uh, going as far as Keenan, I believe it is. I've even got to get it down. Um, I'm going to ask for the map to be sent to me digitally so I can, uh, put a link in the newsletter, in my newsletter for everybody to see it in the district and see what the changes are. Uh, I'm also gonna ask that if you live in these areas and you have any questions about where the lines are, to please send them to me. And, uh, also, if you live in those areas, please subscribe to what is now, uh, the newsletter, uh, that, that I send out. Now, uh, please be advised that these districts don't take effect, I think, until twenty twenty-five. So even though we're trying to reapportion, uh, the, the realignment doesn't take place until after the next election. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, District One, Councilman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm inviting everyone to join me and others who care about the Tomerville community at the upcoming Mobile Planning Commission meeting on October the nineteenth at two PM. We will present a action plan to the Planning Commission and we will appreciate your support at the meeting. The action plan will be for the Tomerville community. And we probably have about a hundred and sixty some pages of what we would like to see in the Tomerville community. I want to truly thank the administration, um, the mayor, his team, everyone that's supported me on this project and make sure that we got this accomplished. This is gonna be, uh, major for the Tomerville community, um, and for District One. I believe this is example that's gonna be made for other communities throughout the city of Mobile that would like to create a plan. And I think it's vital to move any community, any city to have a plan. And so this is the first step to make that happen. And we will present it to the Planning Commission on October the nineteenth. And I, as well, joining with my colleague will be sending, um, a link, uh, regarding the map of redistricting, um, in our newsletter to make sure all our residents in District One understand if anything has changed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pan. Uh, District Five, Councilman Day?
Thank you, Mr. President. We will have a, a district meeting a week from today, October twenty-fourth, at six o'clock PM at ER Dixon Elementary School, which is at the corner of, uh, University Drive and Bitten Spur. It's at six o'clock, ER Dixon, University and Bitten Spur, a week from today. Uh, to go back to, um, to go back to the redistricting. From my understanding was that while the new lines would not take effect for voting purposes until twenty twenty-five, that we were going to transition the calls for service. Uh, the, 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 um, you know, when a constituent contacts us to the new, uh, councilperson because the, one of the reasons we're going through this exercise is to take forty thousand people off of, um, Councilman Woods. So my understanding was, so it, let, let's say, let's say someone that used to be in District Five but is not now in District Five contacts my office and needs some help, I'd be happy to help them. But, but I, at the same time I help them, I'm gonna point out to them that their new councilperson is Councilman Carroll, whoever it happens to be. I think because we've got to, in order, we gotta take the forty thousand people off of Councilman Woods. And so we need to kind of rea- move towards reapportioning those requests. That, that was my understanding of how we were gonna do it. We didn't do this the last time because the changes were so miniscule. But I think if we don't do that, we're just gonna leave Councilman Woods with forty thousand people. We can talk about it some more.
Uh, District Seven, Vice President Gregory?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, I do have a meeting coming up with some of the members of the newly annexed area. Uh, Orchard Estates and Kings Branch will be at the grounds on November thirteenth. That's a Monday evening at six o'clock PM. Um, a number of, uh, members of the administration will be there to, again, go over a lot of the things that are happening and provide information about the services that the city provides. And this will also be an opportunity for us to get more information from the residents about the things that they need. We already have some surveys going on within these new areas for lighting, for, um, municipal enforcement, for, uh, resurfacing those types of things. So we will have better information, but we want to hear from them as well as to what they are looking for from us. So that meeting again is coming up on the thirteenth, Monday evening at six o'clock. Um, the redistricting maps, yeah, we all need to send out a link for that. Uh, I don't want things to get too confusing with everybody because for my district, basically, I'm absorbing those two areas and which is going on as planned. Nothing really changed other than absorbing these new districts. So I don't know how everybody else is going to be able to handle this. We don't want everybody to be confused about who they call, who they don't call. I mean, we can certainly work it out among ourselves if somebody else needs to handle, you know, the, the calls. But I guess we need to sort of work these things out.
Yeah, but I, and I understand there are not a lot of changes in, in, in seven, but in five, there's a significant change. A significant change. And so the only way for me to take, the only way for me to take off of Mr. Woods, the area between University and Hill Press, is if I'm able to shift.
Shift a little bit.
Shift a little.
Yeah, but we'll just have to, I guess, work these out between us to, to figure it out. You know?
Uh-huh, so this is Gregory time.
Yeah. Uh, and the other thing too, just to remind everyone that next week, we will be wearing pink for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I appreciate the mayor sharing the photo, uh, today with me and talking about some of the things we did earlier about the University of South Alabama and being able to get healthcare, quality healthcare here in Mobile. I am one of those recipients of quality healthcare from the Mitchell Cancer Institute when I went through all of my treatments. I didn't have to go to Houston or to Jacksonville or anywhere else to find the kind of treatment that I needed to get me through all of my chemotherapy, radiation surgeries, that kind of thing, for my breast cancer. So as so many of us are, we have been able to take advantage of that kind of healthcare in the city of Mobile. I didn't want to let that go unsaid. But next week, let's all wear our pink to, uh, help support Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
And, uh, I would like to say, uh, looking forward to, um, redistricting. And even though, as Councilman Carroll said legally, it won't be into effect at twenty-five, but I just don't want my colleague to be answering to forty thousand people, even though, even though, I'll say this again, eighty-five, ninety percent of the calls that we receive is administration. You know, just don't forget that, council. You know, it's, it's eighty-five to ninety percent of the calls that we receive is administration. But we need to get into the mood of, you know, answering, you know, our new constituents and where they can get comfortable with us. And again, I get calls all the time from Morningside Theater, you know, um, so basically, we, 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 we counsel everybody, play everybody.
We, I think we tend to help each other in a lot of these.
Yeah, we counsel play everybody. And again, we thank for, thank for Ms. Kisha. But, uh, but again, we need to help out our colleague also. But again, for, uh, District Three, uh, we have a very, uh, important community meeting coming up on October the thirtieth at six o'clock PM at Taylor Park. Uh, we will be discussing the renovation of Taylor Park, uh, the facility and the pool. Inviting all the residents to come out in the O'Dea Community, uh, on the thirtieth, which is a Monday evening at six o'clock PM to express your concerns and what you would like to see at Taylor Park. Anything else from this council? Anything from administration?
It's a big block, yeah. Yeah, they need to be able to see the streets.
Just send me my district is what he's saying. Don't send me everybody. Send me District Two where they can read the streets, please. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Probably moving second in discussion.